I'd like to call to order the Board of County Commissioners' meeting of Palm Beach County, Florida for December 20th, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baxter, Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner, Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to ask Commissioner Moreno to please lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Everybody who's able to, please stand.
I'm not going to read from a book today. I'm going to speak from the heart. As we enter this holiday season, take those that are less fortunate under your wing. Reach out to those in need. Be kind to others. Be kind to your family. Be thankful, be thoughtful, and again, have a happy holiday season. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Good. All right. Madam Administrator, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, we do not.
All right. I'd like to, I'll accept the motion to adopt the agenda then.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion from.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reorder the agenda to put 5B1 and 5D1 to be, 5B1 and 5D1 immediately after each other.
5B1 and 5D1.
They'll be taken together, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Very good.
And I think make a motion to.
And you have a motion to the amended agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bernard and a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries four to zero. All right. Moving on to consent, would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Who's speaking? Oh, the clerk.
For the record, can we please have clarity on the adoption vote as well as the reorder?
So, oh, the re, we're reordering that 5B1 and 5D1 go concurrently together, and it was a motion by Commissioner Bernard and a second by Commissioner Moreno and a vote of.
Four to zero.
Four to zero.
I just wanted to make sure I can take both votes for both items to reorder and to adopt.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. Moving on to consent, would anyone like to pull any items from consent?
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
We have one card.
Oh, pardon me.
We have a motion to approve and a second by Commissioner Bernard.
And we have one comment card on item 3E1 from Jeff Coons.
First, I wish you Merry Happy Christmas and New Year and a very prosperous New Year. My name is Jeff Coons. I've been involved with county food initiatives for over 20 years. I was the city county commissioner and had the oldest commissioned districts and the poorest commissioned district, CCRT areas. And basically, we recognized about 15 years ago, we didn't have much food in our system. And so, we formed this hunger initiative, the Food Bank that's receiving the money today, does a great job, united way coordinating everything. But the reality of the fact is there's, there's the least amount of food for the poorest people in the population at any time we've ever done this. There's the least amount of food. During the pandemic, there were huge amounts of food in these systems like this. 100,000 kids in the school system with free reduced lunch, 40,000 seniors over the age of 60 living below the poverty line, and the, and the most underserved areas in Palm Beach County are the OCR neighborhoods, and they're living in poor neighborhoods, they're living in food deserts, and they don't have access to food. So, I don't have any problems with the Food Bank getting the money, but I would like the county to take a look at strategically figuring out how we could take a look at working with super pantries and, and doing a buying co-op or a way to take a look at what we could do. What the money should be targeted for is complete meals. It should be protein, it should be produce, it should be staples, and, and how do we fill in what's missing of those different groups to be able to go forward? When I say there's less food in the system, I'm perfectly serious. During the pandemic, there were hundreds of thousands of meal boxes that came into these particular systems. The poorest neighborhoods you have, OCR neighborhoods, reach out to Houston Tate, ask him how much food he's getting, and you're going to hear not a lot. So, how do we take a look at this? I'm not suggesting that you fund these systems, which I think you should cooperate with, but figure out how we spend this money that we could buy the stuff that's missing to do complete meals. We have super pantries that have been working in this county for 30 and 40 years, and our friends from Feeding South Florida, it hasn't changed. When we started the Food Bank, they had a little building on Allendale, tiny building that's 100 years old. They bought a building in Boynton Beach, and it's effectively abandoned. So, not much has changed. We're still going back to super pantries, which is what the Palm Beach County Food Bank is, but the county needs to figure out a way that we could begin the buying food to make complete meals for the super pantries, to push it down into those underserved areas and the, and the, and the thousand little agencies that are passing food out to their families, their friends, and everything else. So, appreciate what you do. I'm not on any boards. I'm your food advocate on the hunger steering committee. I'm just advocating for this. And by the way, there's a whole nother system, the homeless kids. I met with the school board last week on a project. There's only 250 kids living in cars in Palm Beach County. That was a crying shame right before Christmas. Anyway, God bless you all. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. All right. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. That motion carries.
Verdina.
Oh, Verdina. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Baker, you're recognized.
Mayor on item, I apologize. We've got one item on the consent that requires a five to at least a super majority vote. I am going to request the board pull that item until we, another person shows up, and I believe that Commissioner Woodward is showing up shortly.
Okay. We have that item number.
3C6.
3C6.
Yes.
Okay. So, let's see, you want to, we'll, we'll withdraw the motion for the consent agenda and reorder again?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay. So, we're, the, you want.
Can I amend the motion to approve the consent agenda amid item 3C6?
Okay. So, we have an amended motion.
A second.
We have a second by Commissioner Sacks or Vice Mayor Sacks. All right. Any further, anything else we need to do to.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And may I make a motion, we take this up later in the meeting.
Very good. All right. So, it has been item 3E.
3C6.
3C6.
3C6. Let me write this down. All right. 3C6 has been removed. With the remaining items, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries unanimously four to zero. Okay. Now, moving on. So, going into our regular agenda, do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Mayor, motion to, to receive and file proof of publication.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks, all in favor, all opposed. It will be received and filed four to zero. That will take us now to item 4A1, public, and this is a public hearing. Mr. Von Lahren, you are recognized. You want to introduce our guests.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. We have with us today our public safety team and particularly emergency management and also Sharon Burrows from the County Attorney's Office. Before you, I promise this is the last COPCN item we'll bring before you this year. And I'm happy to say that, that this is our, this is our big COPCN, our primary provider emergency management services certificate of public conveyance in necessity that we bring before you with a staff recommendation to approve all 11 of the applications that were brought before us this year. These items went before EMS Council, who also supported and recommended that the Board of County Commissioners, too, supports this item going forward. This includes Palm Beach County Fire Rescue and a number of different municipalities that have service areas that are delineated in the motion. We have had an opportunity to speak individually with each of you, going over some of the items that we have, and if you would like, staff is prepared to present that PowerPoint or if you would like to ask us any questions or you have any additional information that you need, staff is happy to provide any of that to you at this time.
I don't believe we need a presentation. Does anyone have any questions for staff? You recognize Vice Mayor Sacks.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Before we do that, I just want to be sure that in not asking for a presentation, we know that the same number, this is a question that I've been over before with you, that the same number of providers will be included in this year's issue as well, minus one, which I think is the city of Highland Beach. Is that correct, Mr. Von Lahren?
So, the same number of providers that we've had for the last six years are included before you. The component with Highland Beach, that is contained within this motion as well, but the nuance is that is that Highland Beach has gotten the, come to the Board of County Commissioners. We brought that separately this year for a pilot COPCN that they're moving forward with. And so, in Delray Beach's application, we delineate the time certain at which they no longer will be providing for Highland Beach, and then Highland Beach, under that pilot COPCN, will commence their EMS services under their COPCN.
So, Mayor, with that noted for the record, I don't, I would move that we omit the public hearing or the, you know, presentation at this time and that we approve this, this issue.
Okay. So, on item 4A1, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, a second by Commissioner Moreno. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay.
I also want to, just briefly, Mayor, if I could just thank our fire rescue team as well. I mean, they've worked very closely with us on this item, and COPCNs sometimes are not smooth, as we've seen in the past, and this has been incredibly smooth process, so we really thank them for their leadership on this as well.
All right. Well, thank you all, and thanks for being here this morning. All right. Moving on to item 4B1, this is engineering and public works. Do we need to get you all place cards so you know where to sit? I guess they didn't, we weren't paying attention. Engineers. Engineers. It's engineers. Okay.
Right? Lawyers sit anywhere.
All right. Mr. Rutter, you're recognized.
Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. This is adoption of your five-year road program. Have before you today, also have a couple items for board direction and seek initiation on a complaint amendment. Once we conclude the business of the five-year road, your three motions there. So, I'll ask Dave to walk you through the presentation right now, though.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners, and County Administrator. With me beside the County, Assistant County Administrator Patrick Reddick, my deputy county engineer, Joanne, and then, and then, and also for our County Attorney's Office representative, great, and also I have Dr. Mo, basically from our traffic division, and Morton, who's director of our road rate production area. So, what I'd like to do is go through the five-year road program and then get your feedback on that. And so, this program is established in, by ordinance 85-40. This adds an annual update to the previous program, so we're submitting for your consideration for FY23 to FY27, funding source to impact fees, reporting share, gas tax, so infrastructure sales tax, and DOT agreements. As part of this process and putting this update together, we ask for input from all of our municipal stakeholders. The Department of Engineering Public Works provides a wide range of services for maintenance and construction to over 3,500 million miles of roads, operating maintenance of over 1,300 intersections, and maintenance over 290 bridges. Members of our team were recognized with three NACO awards, as you can see on the slide there, and, and several Golden Palm awards. Looking at the funding, you know, comparisons compared to FY23, FY27, the funding is evolving. And one of the key things is that gas taxes, which is a major contributor, we think will probably remain flat and probably will flow a little bit. We're still looking at grants potentially. It's hard to forecast grants, but with the new federal legislation, we'll be very aggressive on grants. With that, you can see in terms of what we've done in the past year, in terms of grant application, the largest right now is $100 million for the, the upgrade to County Road 880 to retrofit that, that muck road. It's a 14-mile stretch, so better road for our farm-to-market program. Now, I'll go through by district. For District 1, we'll be doing a couple intersections upgrade for the Donald Ross Bridge at a cost of $400,000 and $700,000, installing a much-needed roundabout for the Limestone Creek area at a cost of $2 million. For District 2, also, this is also for District 7, too. This is a big project. We're in the design process of a $30 million project, Australian Avenue. We recently got a grant to assist with that project through the state. We're working closely with the city of West Palm Beach. They'll be upgrading their water line with our project, which will be huge, installing a new, also installing new FPL lines along this corridor. There's also a 3.5 million dollar project on Sherwood Forest Boulevard that will, on Lake Worth Road, that will widen from a two-lane to a three-lane with shoulders, bike lanes, improved drainage. For District 3, we'll be doing a 6.6 bridge replacement on Florida Mango and a 3.9 million hour project on Kirk Road to widen the two-lane roadway to a three-lane roadway with new drainage, shoulders, and bike lanes. For District 4, including District 7, the major project is the George Bush Baskel Bridge replacement. This is a major undertaken by our department. As you recall, this past spring, we had a major failure of the bridge road movable sections. Through great teamwork of my team, Hardesty and Hanover, and Seacoast Bridge, the bridge we restored back in full operation in 57 days. Currently, we have selected Hardesty and Hanover as an consultant to do a study for replacing the bridge, and we plan to have the contract before the Board of County Commissioners for consideration for approval in a couple months. We're negotiating prices and scope. For District 5, which I highlight the $14 million project for Alliance Road, the favorite pick to Boynton Beach Boulevard, that will widen it from the existing two lanes to four lane divided roadway, full drainage, and bike lane shoulders. Another project is $3.5 million improvements along Smith-Sunnee Road to align the intersection. District 6, which I point out, they have several projects along the County Road 880 corridor. You know, Commissioner Baxter's not here today, but we've met with her as a team, and she would like to make 60th a major east-west corridor along that. For District 7, in addition to the previously mentioned Australian Avenue project and George Bush Baskel Bridge, we'll be doing a $1.4 million intersection improvement along Okeechobee and Jog. Also, we met with the city of Lake Park. We have a project that was requested by the town to, for a new link, and we're working with the town to end an agreement with the county with fund, design, and permit constructed roadway, and then the town will get all the right-of-way. And so, once constructed, the town said they will actually maintain a new link. So, it's great partnership with that, that town. Now, looking at some other projects, we've got 20 projects listed here, close to $66 million that we plan to award in FY23. We're working with Palm Trans and Fire Rescue Department on a single system that can provide transit system priority for Palm Trans and a signal preemptive service for fire rescue. We're working closely with purchasing on that, on that RFP. And then also, we are designed to upgrade 19 wire signals to mast arm. We have, and we've got several pedestrian safety initiatives that you can see on the screen there. Then, looking at additional grants, we have a traffic management center, and we've got a smart grant to help us with the system of the traffic management center. And then, we're also looking at a safety grant to look at some of our high-traffic, you know, collision areas. We've been managing a yearly sidewalk program. The board has provided $1.4 million for that program, and it's really connected around schools. We have a regular committee comprising of the sheriff, school, and our team, and then we submit a recommendation for the board's consideration. We recently had the groundbreaking of a $5.9 million separated bike lane, the first ever in the, for County Road. It was made possible with a $4.2 million grant from the Transportation Planning Agency. We have several other bike lane projects and a pipeline seeking grant funding from the Transportation Planning Agency. Recently, there was a tragic accident along a railroad crossing along the B-line. As a result of that accident, DOT has upgraded their railroad crossings with approved road markings. We have taken that standard and now in the process of upgrading 15 county crossings. We're in the process of getting permits through the railroad, and so it's been a very extensive process, but we're on track to hopefully get all that completed in this calendar, FY23. We have completed 14 resourcing projects, FY22, for a total of $9.5 million, and 21 pathway projects, either repair or new pathways, for a total value of $800,000. With the support of Board of County Commissioners and County Administration, we have made a major improvement in equipment and personnel for our stormwater effort. We have now have a 15-person crew and four new vehicles. They have cleaned 43,000 linear feet of culverts and over 2,600 stormwater structures. Starting FY21, we began a stormwater mapping process. This is an ongoing effort, a multi-year effort, to really document all of our stormwater inventory infrastructure. As shown on the slide, we have several bridge safety initiatives that we're looking at through either our staff or, or some of our standalone contracts to do that on a bridge safety initiative.
Second.
Oh. One major project, as you call, this past spring, we had several, you know, bridge safety issues. DOT has some, also, we had some on ourselves, and so we looked at some of the technology upgrade needed to happen, and with the support of, you know, the Board of County Commission, County Administration, we've got $2 million in our budget to upgrade the sensor technology. So, there's an existing contract vehicle that does provide, you know, that's this type of technology for the airport and sheriff, and that vendor has already assessed in terms of those eight bridges, and we're ready to implement that contract here pretty soon. Okay. And that's it for the formal presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized, and for the record, Commissioner Woodward has joined us.
Good morning, all. Good morning. Thank you for the presentation. I have, let's see where I put my notes here. Okay. So, in the project schedule for construction award in fiscal year 2023, I see we have three Northlake Boulevard entries. So, I actually have some points I want to bring up that I think you all are aware of, but I just want to have it out on the record there. First, I think we need to close the loop on the Northlake study previously approved by the Board of County Commissioners. I know we had approved a $400,000 expenditure, but I don't think that is necessary at this time because it's for widening that might have, might occur in 2035. So, I see that as a waste of taxpayer dollars, so I would like to close the loop on that, however we do that.
Yeah. From a staff standpoint, we've looked at the board, like a year ago, approved, looking at a study, about $400,000. We got the cause $100,000, but in further review, knowing that this is going to be almost 15 to 20 years in the future, doing a study now, I don't think is cost-effective. And so, we would also concur that we all need to do a study at this point.
Okay. My second point is, I'd like to ask the.
Commissioner, can you do a motion so we can just?
Sure. Okay. Here's my first motion for the, for this grouping. I make a motion that we remove the $400,000 budget item for a survey on Northlake Boulevard.
Second.
Is that accurate enough? Study, sorry, not survey, study.
I think we ought to say at the point, if I could, I just, I would say if the motion would include just giving us direction to not conduct the study, and we'll make the adjustment in the next five-year road program as we contemplate what to do with those funds, but the direction to not conduct.
What he said.
Okay.
Okay. I will restate my motion to give staff direction to.
Not conduct a study.
Remove the study.
Correct.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, the study will no longer be considered.
Okay. So, my second point is I would like to ask the board to consider a motion to remove any reference to widening Northlake Boulevard east of the B-line. This does not affect any widening discussions west of B-line, but my reasoning is simple. East of B-line is fully developed, and any widening there would put homeowners out of their homes, businesses out of their businesses, cost the county hundreds of millions of dollars to acquire the right-of-way and widen the existing roadway. So, I realize that traffic is slow-going there, and I want our residents to realize that we're going to have to lower the level of service on that section of roadway. But we all know it, it's cost prohibitive, and to keep it in our discussion, I think, is something that's unnecessary. So, I would like to make a motion to remove any discussion about the widening of Northlake Boulevard from B-line to Military Trail from any future reference in our TIM and our five-year road plan.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Commissioner Bernard. Clerk, are you clear on the motion? Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on this motion?
I have one more.
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No further discussion on the motion, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries unanimously, five to zero.
Thank you. And I have one more point.
Okay.
As for Northlake Boulevard, west of the B-line, in order to talk about widening, and we, my office is getting tons and tons of emails, both pro and con, but really, in order to talk about widening, there needs to be a plan, and we really don't have a plan yet. So, I would like to see a couple things. One would be a map that shows us the current right-of-way easements that the county has, current projects that are in the works, whether it's roadways, standpoint to new home construction, those kind of developments, and then a description of where expansion should occur or may occur in the future due to interruptions from tra, interruptions in traffic. For example, communities, roadways, right, dedicated right-turn lanes. And I think we also need to see a GIS map of the right-of-way because if we're going to have this discussion about widening Northlake Boulevard, and I am on the record, I don't want to see why Northlake widened eight, eight lanes. We need a better plan, and if you can supply us with information about that, it would be greatly appreciated. Was that rambling, or did you get what I, was I concise enough?
No. Commissioner, I understand the point, and we can absolutely provide that, given the previous direction we had to initiate the TIM amendments on Northlake West, which would be moving forward. You'll be seeing that February 1st, I believe it is, at your transmittal hearing. We can have all that information available and have a much broader discussion, answer any questions you might have, but taking note of those points and that information you want, those will be available.
So, so basically, you're giving staff direction. Is anybody?
That would be, that would be direction to staff to give us a better plan of what is, what is possible.
And they'll bring this back at the February 1st meeting.
If that's okay with the rest of the board.
I just have one question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moreno, in regards to your suggestion, do we need to also speak to any of the municipalities? Are any municipalities impacted by whatever we decide?
There's several on that. You have West Palm Beach, you have Palm Beach Gardens, and then you have Unincorporated.
So, is it possible for us to also include whatever that's going on with those municipalities also?
We could, we are always supposed to work as a team, so whatever would give us the most amount of information.
So, if that's what I would like to know, so in that way, we would know exactly what would, what's going on in Palm Beach Gardens and West Palm Beach.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Are you clear? Staff's clear. Staff's clear, all right. And Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Engineering, for doing such work. We've been working together as a team here in my office. I have a couple of little issues that I want to bring up, and I'm going to refer to, we don't have a page number, wait, no, we do, page 12. We could refer to page 12, on the very bottom, there is Lake Ridge Boulevard, west of Florida's Turnpike, 1.4 miles. This is the, and this is an issue that we have discussed privately, and I'd like to bring it up, that the widening of the intersection by Century Village West, Century Village Boca, that intersection will be widened, and it's good that it must be widened, however, we want to make sure that the barrier between the canal and the widened Yamato Road will continue. And I know that encroaches upon property that is owned and, at least at this time, by Lakewood Drainage District. So before we begin the construction of the widening of Yamato Road, I want to be sure that we have the permission of Lakewood Drainage District to continue the barricade. Any construction on Yamato Road that will bring vehicles right between Whisper Walk and Century Village West closer to that, to that canal, should never be, should not be constructed until this issue has been taken care of. I know we've discussed this, I just want to make sure that it's on the record that that will occur, and I know that for the record also, we will be visiting with the Lakewood Drainage District Board about making sure that we have that barricade. And then, let me see. That is it. I am very pleased with this, and I know that any work that's going to happen on Yamato will not proceed until we have this issue with the barricade, but also the work that we're doing as a county on Atlantic Avenue or those roads that are leading into Atlantic Avenue will be concurrently with the work from FDOT on Atlantic. And thank you for all your work, and thank you also for getting grants, because that helps the taxpayers of Palm Beach County. So, Mayor, I just wanted to put it on the record about those barricades.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Did you need something, Ms. Baker?
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks, for that input, and we will continue to work diligently on getting those barricades, but there are standards, just for the record, that must be met, and we'll ensure that all the standards are met for those barricades as we continue to work through the process.
Thank you so much, Madam Administrator. I am adamant that I will oppose any widening of that intersection until safety measures are put in, and I know we have to go to the Lakewood Drainage District in order to get those approvals, but I'm sure that once a review is made of the age of the residents who use that intersection, as well as the fact that there's a barricade all the way to that one spot, will indicate that I, that we need those barricades. So, thank you so much, and I know we're going to work together as a team. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. Sorry for my tardiness today. I just wanted to add, Commissioner Moreno asking for an update with the expansion of Northlake Boulevard. I know that there are FDOT projects and some other road extensions, like State Road 7, which I know is somewhat contentious, but when you give us that information, if you could also add in, like, I think Persimmon is a thoroughfare road that's expected, and some other roads to help with the development that's going to be happening in this area, just so we have an idea, not just what the county is responsible for, but what other agencies with the municipalities as well, but just so we have a full understanding of what's planned for this area, what's being developed here, and what's the best path forward to ease congestion before all of this development's finished. So if I could just add that to staff direction, please.
All right. You clear on that? All right.
Okay. I had a couple of questions myself. Going back to the signalization and understanding what's happening there, can you give me a better understand? I know you're planning something, I believe, for Okeechobee and Military with some new technology, is that correct?
Yeah, probably an upgrade, just regular signal upgrade.
So what, what's, when are we going to get to where we're actually using technology to manage traffic flow, instead of just putting them on timers?
Okay. Dr. Moe, come up a little bit.
I mean, I think, having cars sitting, waiting while there is no cross-traffic-
Right.
-in this day and age on some of our busier roadways does not make sense.
Right.
Good morning, I'm Mo Al, Director of Traffic Division, for the record. We do have technology, and we use technology, but also when you have technology and sensors fail, because that can happen, that can occasionally happen, that you would see that traffic is servicing an approach that doesn't have any traffic on it. So that can happen, occasionally you come across these things, and I know that you have Mayor called our office on some of traffic issues on Okeechobee Boulevard, and we did look into those, and we found all the time that there was a piece of equipment that failed and caused that issue to happen. But we do have the technology, and we tried other types of technologies on Okeechobee Boulevard. Actually, it was installed by FDOT, but not by us, but we managed and operated that system, the NSYNC system that we had on Okeechobee Boulevard, that proved not to be feasible and was not efficient, and we ended up removing it. We are looking all the time for newer technologies that would help improve our efforts to provide for the proper flow of traffic, and we are looking into advanced controllers that we are deploying along Okeechobee Boulevard, and we are also looking at newer TV camera technologies that are offered by some of the prominent companies, and we are planning on deploying one of them on Okeechobee Boulevard at Rosemary. I think you mentioned Okeechobee and Military, but it is Okeechobee and Rosemary.
I, I think the, I think, my understanding is, this technology has migrated and improved dramatically over the last few years. I think the last time we, my understanding is, last time was probably in seven years ago, eight years ago of technology, which in, is really multiple lifetimes in, in technology development. So I don't know what it's going to take to help move this county forward, but there are other counties across the country that are able and have implemented signalization technologies that have improved their traffic flow, they can, it's, to me, it's both from perspective of moving a better flow, but also saving on fossil fuels, cars sitting, idling when not necessary is, you know, that's just blowing pollution into the air, and, you know, we're all trying to deal with the impacts of sea level rise. We spent time at a conference last week, understanding what's happening in our area, and I think anything that can be done, as in additional, you know, they have the ability to sense when there are pedestrians, when there are bicycles, so that they can offer, you know, the proper signalization for them without somebody having to get off their bike and push a button, or a pedestrian who may not be familiar with the names of the street to know which button to push, so they push the wrong button and it ends up offering walks when they don't need that. So I think we can just do a better job, and I've been asking about this for a number of years, and I think there are, there is an Israeli company that I've seen that's being utilized, I believe, in Phoenix, and a number of cities across the country that have camera systems that can understand how many vehicles are waiting and allow them to go through, can also see if somebody's actually going to run a red light and try and prevent an accident from happening, so keeping everybody safe. So I'd like to see more work being done in this area.
Mayor, if I may say, I think you are referring to a company by name, I think, No Traffic. They reached out to me, I met with them, I am familiar with the system that they offer, and I reached out to the FDOT to have their input on this, because most of the major corridors that we have in the county are FDOT roads, and we work with them closely, and if any upgrade for the signal system would happen, typically it's going to be led by FDOT. We work with them on that, but we are not the sole authority on this, so-
Excuse me, I saw the email from DOT back when you, when we asked about that, and they, they seemed like they were very interested in saying, hey, let's move forward, if you guys can do something, they would be very interested to see the results.
I'll be very enthusiastic, so-
Mayor, we will, we will take your advisement under consideration and follow up with FDOT and report back to you, and this board.
All right. And then the other question I had is in regards to bipartisan infrastructure bill. I know there's a lot of money for available, being made available, are we able to take advantage of some of those grants?
Well, most of the grants are flowing through the Transportation Planning Agency, and so the ones that are directly to like us would be like the bridge stuff, but like the bike and pet stuff, they're filtered through DOD, sorry, through DOT or through the Planning Agency. And so, so we'll double-check, but we've been very aggressive on that, so you're correct on that.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Sacks and Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to give direction to the staff on the issue, most respectfully, Administrator, on the issue of using better technology. I was in the legislature when we did the red light cameras. That was seven years ago, maybe, and if we can, if we can take a photograph of somebody running a red light and get their license plate and then prosecute them, we should be able, we should have the technology today on our county roads, and we should lead the state in this. So if it's appropriate at this time, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to give direction to staff, to give us a report on what we can do with the technology that's out there today. I know it's coming in from Israel, and we, it is, but there's other sources, I'd like to take a review of it and get a report back as to how Palm Beach County can, can use technology to better serve the residents in our, not just for climate change, but also for traffic safety.
Very good. Okay, I don't think we need a motion, but I think staff direction, is anybody objecting?
Understood.
There's no objection, so, so be it. All right. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Well, since we're talking about Okeechobee and we're talking about pedestrians, are we going to get a walk, a walkover on Okeechobee Boulevard somewhere downtown, like a partnership with West Palm Beach and the Related Group and the county, so that we can, I mean, Okeechobee Boulevard in front of the Convention Center is, not only is it six lanes, it's also a very large median, so it's a lot of, a lot of ground to cover, and if we could somehow have a walkover, what's the technical term for that? Pedestrian crossover that's elevated, there you go, with an elevator, so that it's ADA compliant. I think this is a discussion, and I know it's, I know Mayor Weinroth wants tunnels, but I'm seeing a crossover, a walkover that's elevated as a, something to help solve the problem of traffic on Okeechobee, especially downtown. So staff direction, just information, see what we can come up with, and I realize it's not something that the county would ever do on its own. I mean, this is the city of West Palm Beach, and we do have Related as a partner, and it's a state road, so we got all kinds of gyrations going on, but I think it's something we, an alternative that we need, especially because we don't want traffic to have to stop for that long for pedestrians to walk across, but they need to be safe.
At the TDC, we have discussed this issue decades. I believe that we're at the point where there's enough traffic and everybody's doing different lanes, adding an additional hotel. Our actual occupancy of the Convention Center continues to grow. Our advisory boards are strongly recommending it. We will continue to work with the city of West Palm, because they are the permitting agency and would need to permit, as well as Related. So we will continue to follow up on that issue and get back to this board. I will take it back, our Chair of the TDC, Commissioner's Vice Mayor Sacks, is well aware that this discussion recently happened, and so we'll continue to push forward and try to work with our partners as closely as possible to get it done.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on this item?
Do we need-
What do you need?
Did we make the motion?
No.
Okay, so I make a motion.
On 4B1.
I'm looking at what the actual motion should be here. Okay, so a motion to determine that Palm Beach County has adhered to and implemented the five-year road program, adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 23, Article 1, Section 23 1, and approve the hiring of professionals to design a prize, excuse me, appraise and assist in the acquisition of lands, right-of-ways, and easements necessary to undertake the projects.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Yep.
Second from Commissioner Vice Mayor Sacks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, one final point, we would request the board initiate a TIM amendment for 60th Avenue, Dave touched on it briefly, from 80 to 100 feet, 140th Avenue to the State Road 7 extension, and kind of following on Commissioner Woodward's point about larger traffic movement in the area. 60th has always been planned as a long, long time on the TIM maps as an east-west thoroughfare area. We've initiated efforts at times to expand. This expansion here is a modest one, just meant to address alignment, it's not adding additional lanes, but 60th would be one of those big thoroughfares. We would request this, this amendment, you would see it as well in February, 80 to 100 feet from 140th Avenue to State Road 7.
I'm not sure I understood what you just-
Requesting the board initiate a TIM amendment to increase the right-of-way width for 60th Avenue from 80 to 100 feet. The western boundary of that would be 140th Avenue, eastern boundary would be State Road 7. So you've already got 80 feet on the TIM map for 60th right now, we just want to add 20 feet to it, and we do have a map available.
Administrator Baker, you're recognized.
No, I'll wait until it's done, this is to recognize one of the employees.
So, looking at 60th, and we talked to Commissioner Baxter, she's not here, but definitely, she definitely wants, looking at that, an east-west corridor, we've got Northlake, we got Southern, and we got Okeechobee, and we need other, you know, connectors to move the traffic. And so looking at what we have in terms of existing right-of-way, we have 100 feet from basically Seminole Pratt to State Road 7, but if you go further east, we only have an 80-foot right-of-way. Ideally, you know, you want two lanes of traffic in each direction, to do that, we need 100 feet basically across the board there. And so just like Patrick indicated, we will like the board to consider initiation, talking about an 80-foot right-of-way from State Road 7 all the way out to that eastern section there, and so extra 20 feet in terms of extra right-of-way for consideration, to have a conversation with the community on that, so.
So you're asking for us to initiate a TIM amendment for 60th to go from 80 to 100 feet, from 140th to State Road 7?
Correct.
That's correct.
Did I get that right? Okay. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Bernard, and a second from Commissioner Moreno. All right, any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor? I'm voting on this motion, but, you know, since the Commissioner for District 6 is not here, this is subject to her wanting this and approving this, so.
And this is only initiation and not adoption, so it'll have to come back.
She's in full support.
Understand, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, clerk, are we clear? Okay, good. All right, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you will indulge me for just one second, please. We've got one of our outstanding employees in the audience from Engineering, our Public Works Section, and I'd like to recognize him, because when I- And I'd like to recognize him because when I heard this last week, it, it was a good story to tell. On Saturday, September 10th, while on the way to work to assist road and bridge annual inventory, Mr. Daniel Doucette was passed by a vehicle on Jog Road at Gun Club Road, which was traveling at a high rate of speed. The vehicle continued north on Jog Road. Mr. Doucette continued north on Jog as well, passing over the turnpike. Mr. Doucette noticed debris in the roadway and dust on the east side of the road. He turned his vehicle around and went back to the location. He found that the vehicle had passed him, had driven off the road into the trees just north on, on the turnpike. Mr. Doucette went down the slope to the vehicle and discovered the vehicle was on fire and the driver was still in the vehicle. The airbags were deployed and doors were locked. Mr. Doucette attempted to break out the window of the rear passenger side door in an attempt to unlock the front passenger door to remove the driver. He was unsuccessful in breaking the window as well as the front door remaining locked. However, the rear door was unlocked. He entered the vehicle. He was able to pull the driver over the front seat into the rear seat and out the rear door, thus removing him from a burning vehicle. At the time of the, at this time, a moving truck stopped and two men assisted Mr. Doucette, and we'd like to thank them as well, to move the driver further from the vehicle. Mr. Doucette was told by fire rescue that had he not been there and removed the driver, the driver would not have survived. He has been a county employee since July of 1997. And I just wanted to recognize him. Mr. Doucette, would you come forward? Because these are the individuals that work for you. And we are dedicated and committed to our residents. He went above and beyond the call of duty and we are just very, very proud of him. So thank you very much. Do you want to say something first?
What do you want?
Do you want to say something first?
You know, like that, I probably want to. Want me to talk?
Yeah, if you want to.
You guys have been there long enough. They don't want to hear me talk. No, it was just right place at right time. It was, it was an act of God. I was there. I swear because I didn't see the car crash. And I remember thinking when that car went, a black Mercedes went past me doing about 100 miles an hour. I didn't have radar gun, but he was flying back by Gun Club. And I lost sight of him. And I got stopped for a couple of traffic lights. And I remember seeing him when he went flying by. I said, I might see a wreck this morning. And I kind of forgot about it. It was five minutes later when I saw that dust in the road and a little bit of grass, like somebody taking a leaf blower. And it hit me, that guy. I turned around and went back. And sure enough, I didn't see the crash and I didn't see the car. But I went back and it was like God said, something just happened there. And I was just lucky. I got to play firefighter for a minute. And that's it. The guy did survive. He had internal injuries. He went to the hospital and had to have surgery, but he got out a couple of days later and went home. So I just had my moment. That's all.
While walking up, but we had the fire chief, spoke to him because when I heard about it, I said, this is unique. And so we sent it to him, me and fire chief finally connected. And because they're the experts, he said, no, this is real stuff. And, and the fire chief said, no, he's going to be recognized at our annual awards. And then I said, well, I'd like you to come by, you know, talk to our troops. And so he came by last week and his words were just prophetic. And Chief, if I could just repeat your words, he says, you know, we're trained professionals. We're trained to do this. We have our equipment. We have our, our team of people that do this. But this gentleman went above beyond and he is truly a hero. And so thank you, Chief Kennedy, for coming out and really explaining it to your, being a superhero. You're one of the best. So thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Doucette. Mr. Doucette also has his daughter, who is also a West Point graduate, 2012. So please stand up.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Doucette, and thank you for your service to our community and in saving this person's life.
Get to work.
Thank you for sharing that, that very moving story with us, Administrator Baker. It does go to show the commitment the folks that work for the county have to, to service, to public service and to our community. So thank you very much and wishing you and your family a very happy holiday and a very happy and healthy new year. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Before we go on to our next agenda item, do we want to go back to the agenda item that we polled from consent?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 3C6.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 3C6 from the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
It required five people.
Sorry, give me one second. 3C6?
Yes.
Everything good? All right. All right. That motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on. We are now on to item 4C1 and still in our public hearings, Environmental Resource Management. Do we need a presentation on this or? Anyone want a presentation?
Can we do just a brief presentation?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. My name is Deborah Drum. I'm the Department Director for Environmental Resources Management. This is the first of two items to come before the Board of County Commissioners in compliance with requirements of the county's Conservation Lands Protection Ordinance, which I'll refer to as the CLPO. We have a team that we've been working with from Florida Power and Light. I'll ask them to kind of raise their hands in the audience and you'll see the representation of people that we've been, are they? That of the team that we've been working with on this request. This item conceptually approves the conveyance of a permanent, non-exclusive utility easement over county-owned conservation lands in exchange for the donation of approximately five times as much high-quality environmentally sensitive lands. We will have a second agenda item coming before you, which will formally authorize conveyance of the easement and accept this, the acceptance of the compensatory land donation. So ERM was approached on this issue. This gives you an idea of where we are in the county. We're north of North Lake Boulevard and the surrounding natural areas are Loxahatchee Slough. You can see Pine Glades labeled as number two. Hungry Lane Slough is labeled as number three. Cypress Creek, number four. Sweet Bay, number five. And Winding Waters is down there in the lower segment of the map, just to give you an idea of vicinity wise. The area of interest is in the Loxahatchee Slough area and that is in the northeast portion of Palm Beach County. The request from FPL, we were first contacted in September of 2021 about this easement request and more formal discussions commenced in June of 2022 with the initial CLPO application submitted in August of 2022. FPL asked the county to grant a utility easement over five 15-foot wide strips of land, which totals 2.8 acres. And that's within the county's Loxahatchee Slough natural area. FPL did meet the requirements of the county's Conservation Lands Protection The CLPO was established in October of 2003 and it provides for the protection of conservation lands and does require compensation for any of conveyance of interest in conservation lands. The application and approval process is multi-phase. FPL has complied with all of those aspects, including our review of a staff report. The Natural Areas Management Advisory Committee that advises this board on these issues has met and recommended approval. And the municipality review and comment, if applicable, is required. The City of Palm Beach Gardens did issue a letter of no objection on this item. So we're here today again to obtain the conceptual approval of the project in the form of a resolution and conduct a public hearing to satisfy the requirements of the Conservation Lands Protection Ordinance. And again, this does require a supermajority vote of the board.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
I just want to say that the folks from FPNL reached out and very appreciative of the expedited way in which this is happening and would like to continue that. And I, just a reminder to FPNL, make sure you get your contracts in so it can get done. And with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt and also recognize that there is no cost associated with this item and this resolution must be adopted by a supermajority.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? This motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. 4D1. Let's see. And is this where we put them?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4D1 and state that no county funds for implementation are required.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard. We have a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. All in favor? All opposed? This motion carries five to zero. All right. Moving on. Item 4E1. Do you need a presentation on this? This is, we're good? Would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I do in my notes after my agenda review, asked if we would have a brief presentation.
Okay. We're going to have a presentation then.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It's Mia Jella, Director of Facilities Development and Operations. With me today is Chief Assistant County Attorney Michael Jones. County staff is recommending a motion to adopt an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, amending Section 1920 of the Palm Beach County Code for providing for repeal of laws in conflict, providing for separability, providing for savings clause, providing for inclusion in the Code of Law and ordinances, and providing for an effective date and a resolution recognizing that the Facilities Development and Operations Department is responsible for the management of parking lots and parking garages in and around certain county facilities. County staff has determined the need to amend Section 1920 of the Palm Beach County Parking Ordinance to recognize certain county parking management practices. The Palm Beach County Parking Ordinance, among other things, authorizes the county engineer to determine and designate traffic restrictions on certain roads within the boundaries of the county and, subject to resolution of the board, to establish parking regulations in parking areas located on property owned or leased by the county, whether or not such parking areas are located within the boundaries of a municipality. The proposed revision to the ordinance recognizes that the county engineer may delegate his authority to establish parking regulations for certain parking facilities to other county departments. Since the first reading to amend this ordinance on November 15, 2022, a minor edit was made, removing reference to the pronouns his or her to the revision, recognizing the county engineer's delegation authority. FDO has long been responsible for the parking lots and parking garages, including parking meters at certain county facilities operated and managed by the department. We have also long been responsible for collecting and accounting for the monies generated by the meter parking at these facilities. Therefore, FDO is requesting Board of County Commissioners approval to recognize that we are responsible for such management of certain county facilities, garages and lots, and responsible for managing the assessments and collection of those parking fees. The resolution authorizes FDO to manage and maintain the parking garages and lots associated with county facilities operated and managed by the department and to collect and account for the monies generated by meter parking. The resolution also requires that FDO prepare a policy and procedures memorandum regarding how the FDO directors do review parking fees from time to time and to determine whether the parking fee should be raised or lower. Finally, the resolution requires FDO to seek board approval before installing any additional meter parking at any county facility that does not already have one. The county engineer will continue to maintain authority over any meter parking within county roads of right of ways. And he has no objection and supports this request. This concludes county staff presentation. We will take any questions as you deem appropriate.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none. All right. We have a motion. We have a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno and a second by Vice Mayor Sacks.
Got two Marias here. Beat it.
All right. Any, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? This motion passes unanimously, five to zero. All right. Moving on to our regular agenda. This is for airports. This is, as we like to affectionately say, the Bob Weinroth rule. So let's see if we can take care of this before Ms. Beebe takes a seat.
I make a motion we receive and file. We approve amendment number eight and we approve a budget amendment of $388,000 and change.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you. Almost made it. All right. We're back to Environmental Resource Management. This is item 5B1. And does D1 come with this as well? So we're going to, we're going to go over 5B1, 5D1 concurrently.
It does, Mayor. Thank you. We've got a consolidated presentation on both points so we can be more expeditious of handling them both. Appreciate you doing that. We've got ERM and PZB here, just a few fee increases. And as we explained to most of you, so many of our fees are trying to structure and put them on a index so they would just flow and modify annually. These are ones that have not been adjusted in a number of years or ones that were not included in that bucket. This is part of that continued effort. It reflects the change in pricing certainly in the past 15 years and the amount of staff time that goes into it. So with that, Whitney is going to start. Yes?
Good morning. Whitney Carroll, Deputy Director, Planning, Zoning and Building. So for the planning, zoning and building fees that we're revising, we are bringing before you three fees that are being revised. Two slightly increased, well, increased, and then one that's being reduced. The last major fee revision for planning, zoning and buildings fee, our fee schedule was in 2018 after a major unified land development update. The majority of the planning, zoning and building fees are adjusted annually by the Consumer Price Index. Last year, or this year, actually, it adjusted by 7%. The proposed increases are due to the staff time involved in the noted processes and proposed reduction is in, is in response to a recent ULDC update. We are also asking for the removal of certain ERM review fees, and that's why we are traveling concurrently from our zoning, from this, that are related to the zoning development review process. And we're going to, and then there'll be added to the ERM proposed fee schedule. We, we held a joint meeting with stakeholders in July, July 22nd of this year, and we had no objections and no comments from stakeholders. With that, I'll pass it to Deb Drum.
Okay. Yes. Again, Deb Drum, Department Director, Environmental Resources Management. So we really appreciate the partnership with PZB on this item. When they came to us and let us know that they were going to be considering revisions to their fee schedule, they asked, as we work together on a lot of these reviews, if we had similar considerations. When we looked at our fee schedule, we realized that the last time ERM fees were updated was in November of 2009, which was 13 years ago. And in the county, typically fees would be adjusted annually, annually based on Consumer Price Index. These have been static numbers for that period of time and not at all adjusted. And it is important to note that the fees that we do charge are partial costs. It is not a full It is not a full cost accounting of our time and effort on the applications, but it is sort of an offset. The majority of our fee increases were set to reflect changes, again, to the CPI from the last increase until February of 2022. I do want to point out, they don't take, our fee changes don't take into account changes to the CPI since then. And so for reference, the CPI increased about 31% from 2009 to 2022 in February, but then there's been an additional, as Whitney said, a 5% to 7% increase just this year since February. Those are not included. We excluded that recent inflation sort of adjustment on the CPI in our fee schedule since we'd been discussing them prior to that. We considered the fact that development proposals have evolved to be more complex. In other words, the easy parcels have been developed, and the ones that are left remaining to be developed in the county have a myriad of issues or complexities that come along with them. And we also examined changes made during our process that altered ERM's costs. We actually made code changes in recent years that were made with the intent of proving, improving the quality and accuracy of the initial application submittals. So we've been trying to work with industry on their initial submittal, so we save time and effort having to go back and forth through the process, that we work with them at the front end to get those high-quality proposals. And there was less back and forth, meaning more efficiency, less staff time, and less effort on their consultant's part. Some of the process changes are pre-application appointments, moving the review of regulating plan and vegetation disposition charts earlier in the process, and having the submittal reviewed and signed by an environmental professional, such as a landscape architect, and barricade permit requirements. Again, we're hoping that all of these, all this upfront work ultimately saves time throughout the whole process. And as Whitney mentioned, we jointly, between PZB and ERM, we have a very long exhaustive mailing list of contacts that we use for industry representatives. They were all invited to participate in that stakeholder industry to unveil what all of these changes are being proposed. And again, it was well-attended, and we did not receive any comments at that time. Really quickly, these are, this is a list of the programs that's overseen by ERM for which we are proposing fee adjustments, and each of the changes are specifically addressed in this presentation if you want that detail. But our sea turtle protection and sand preservation, wellfield protection, environmental reviews, vegetation preservation and protection, and excavation, these are all regulatory programs that ERM oversees that are subject to this. We also looked at fees that were no longer relevant, and so we are proposing to eliminate certain fees that are no longer really useful and we feel are not helpful. That's natural areas equestrian permits, additional vegetation permits, and file searches, which are now accommodated through public records. Pass it back over to Whitney.
Yes. And thank you. I'd like to reiterate that, too. Working with ERM has been a pleasure. And I can go through the three fees that we're proposing to modify, or I can just answer your questions. And then I know that Deb has a more extensive list, so we can go through each fee if you'd like, or we can answer questions as you might have them.
It's a board's pleasure. Everybody's good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good?
Okay. So we can go through these really quickly. This is a side-by-side comparison of the current fee with the proposed fee. You're good. Okay.
No, we don't need to go through that.
All right. All right. So, any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sacks.
Thank you very much. First, I wanted to thank you for all you do out there. It's not easy, and you're right, the easy ones we're taking care of. Now you're looking at more difficult ones to permit. This is, I would like to ask you this, though, if you could, one of the, I know you spoke to the stakeholders and there weren't any issues. I get a lot of issues from stakeholders who would like, and I don't want to say complain, but nobody in my district complains. However, I think that maybe with the use of technology, we could possibly do these things a little more efficiently without having to take so much staff time. And I wonder if, Ms. Drum, if we could take a look at that, and if you could, I'd like to give you direction, if we could, from members of the staff, of the members of the, my colleagues here on the commission, if there's any way that we can streamline staff time by the use of technology. We talked about that in Engineering for Roads, and could we possibly utilize the same ideas for what you all have to go through? And I'm asking you if you have any thoughts or issues with greater use of technology, even if it may be have to increase budget to have you well-equipped with today's technology.
So we, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate, I'm also a big fan of efficiency in government, and so in making, we have been flat on our staffing, and so we've had to use the technology in order to find those efficiencies. So I can tell you, by the use, the invention of the iPad was a very, field iPads in particular has been a very good use of technology, where we use those in the field to collect data that's going directly into databases. I mean, there's examples of that in ERM. And this really thorough review that we did through all of our articles, and we continue to work with PZB cooperatively to look at all the different articles and look at where we can find efficiencies. So one of the things that we did was, we changed the code to require this pre-application meeting, which again is helping the consultants that are representing the developers to prepare higher-quality submittals, to kind of help them get in the door, having everything right, as opposed to them sort of throwing spaghetti on the wall and seeing what sticks and what doesn't, and having this back and forth. So a lot of those efficiencies we looked for a couple of years ago, and we're happy to have made those changes and the requirements. So we feel that we are always trying to improve and that we have done that most recently in some of these processes as well.
Okay, good.
And to add to that, so ISS has been working with us pretty closely on, essentially, I call it the Uber inspection. So when you have a scheduled inspection for your house, hot water heater, whatever it might be, you can actually track your driver and see when he's going to actually arrive at your house, so you don't have to take the whole day off work. So those are some of the efficiencies we're working on with ISS to make it more interactive. You can do it with an app on your phone to kind of speed things along. And same thing to the inspectors, when they get there, everything's done on the iPad or iPhone, so it's real-time updates.
Excellent.
So we're on it. It's just, you know, it's a big endeavor, but we're working on it.
Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this. I just want to say that I would rather see incremental increases as opposed to one where it's going up 400%, and I realize that's something that's only occurred twice in five years, so it's not a big impact. But I know that we're doing it with our other departments where it's an incremental increase every year. I think we need to make sure that, and that's what we're, we're doing an increase here, but in the future, we continue that process here. And also, as you said about your pre-app meeting, again, I'm going to reiterate that I would like to see mandatory pre-app meetings, and somehow I don't even really think that reaching out to, what was the word you used? Our?
Stakeholders.
Our stakeholders. No, that wasn't the word. Members of the development community. I think this is something that's necessary, period. So just my comment to hammer home what I said last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure who the question would be for, but it seems like this is a pretty good arrangement between ERM and PZB. And I was wondering, are there other departments that are working equally with PZB to kind of do what you're doing now?
So PZB is responsible for essentially herding all the 14 cats together in an application, so we do have to work with, we do work with all of them because they all come through our process. So engineering, land development, the survey department, you name it, it comes through us. So yes, we're trying to make it more efficient and better, because if it's quick and easy and better, it's easier on staff, and we've just, we're running out of time.
Okay. And this will be part of the pre-application process, all of the departments working together?
So we have a DRO meeting, which is kind of like the pre-application, but we can maybe revisit it and make it a little bit different. Pre-apps, when everyone on the front end knows exactly what's expected, then they can deliver, and it makes it easier for staff, too, because the survey's done a certain way, and the plat's done, you know, just, all those technical things get done right up front, and all their experts are aware, instead of, you know, nine months down the road, hey, this is wrong, you didn't read our manual, et cetera.
I don't see any further questions. So we need to, do we need to handle this as two separate motions then?
Yes.
Okay. So let's start with 5B1.
I make a motion that we adopt.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Marino, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks on 5B1. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries five to zero. And then now 5D1.
I'll make a motion we adopt 5D1.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. Any further discussion on 5D1? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion also carries unanimously five to zero. Okay. So now we're moving on to 5C1. Does anyone need a presentation on this? This is transferring some assets to some other fire depart, these are unneeded outdated assets.
We don't. Right, no, sir.
Okay.
I don't need a presentation, but I just want to say thank you to the county for partnering with Glades County and Gadsden County. I know this is important, that we all work as a community, especially when we are what we consider a donor county, and we are donating to counties that are in less financial shape as we are. So I appreciate the county doing this.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Marino. And we have a motion on, this is on 5C1A and B.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks, all in favor, all opposed. That motion also carries unanimously five to zero. Okay. Moving on now to 5E1. This is Housing Community Services.
May I make a motion that we approve 5E1?
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Marino in support of item 5E1A, B, and C, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. Is there any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion also carries unanimously five to zero. Now, moving on to 5F1. This is from Housing and Economic Development, funding for...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item 5F1A, B, and C.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bernard on 5F1A, B, and C, and a second from Vice Mayor Sacks. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion also carries unanimously five to zero. Okay. And we have 5F2.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 5F2.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard on 5F2. We have a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion also carries five to zero. Okay. And I believe this may be our last item. This is on 5G1 Facilities, and this is regarding an agreement, an amendment to an agreement with the related companies.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for item, to approve item 5G1A, B, and C. And also to include that, it's not in District 7, it is in District 2.
Thank you very much. I saw that as well. And, okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bernard on 5G1A, B, and C, and a second, we have a second by Commissioner Marino, all in, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, this motion also carries five to zero. All right. Now, board appointments. And I guess, since there's nobody on the far end of the dais, I guess we're going to start on the far-left side. So Commissioner Woodward, do you have any board appointments today?
I have none.
Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Marino?
None at this time.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
None at this time.
And for myself, I have one. I would like to, can I do this, or does somebody have to do it?
Just say it, and we'll make it for you.
Okay, I'd like to appoint Santo DeGanji to the Personal Appeals Board.
Motion to appoint Santo DeGanji to the Personal Appeals Board.
And we have a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, that motion carries five to zero. Okay. All right. Staff comments. Madam Administrator, you're recognized.
Just want to wish all Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, and all other celebrations of holidays throughout the year. Please stay safe.
Thank you. County Attorney.
I'm dittoing our county administrator. Happy holidays to everybody. Thank you for everything that you've done this year, and we're looking forward to a great new year.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. I guess we will, if you don't mind, we're going to, we'll lead off with you, Commissioner Woodward, again.
Yes, thank you. Again, I'd like to apologize for my tardiness, but I did get to attend the ribbon-cutting for Brightline this morning in Boca. I was hoping they'd be able to bring me up on the train, but they were headed south to Aventura for that grand opening as well, so that's how I got here. Yeah, I did have to put a plug in their ear. Their earliest train coming to West Palm right now is 10:08, so I've asked for an earlier time so I can actually make it up here in a timely manner. Also, I would like to just let everyone know the Boca Bowl is tonight at FAU. I believe there are still some tickets available, looks to be a good time. Hopefully, the rain will hold off and we'll have a good evening. Otherwise, I hope everyone has a great holiday season and a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today at the City of Boynton Beach, they had a memorial for Officer Dennis Castro at Christ Fellowship, so I'd like to extend a condolences to the family and friends of Officer Dennis Castro. Second, congratulations to Ben Stahl on graduating from American University. He was my intern while he was in high school and in college, and so we're proud of him and wishing him a lot of luck and success in whatever he decides to do. Yes, probably. Yesterday, I believe, city and state Florida, they listed, they had a list of the most influential women in Florida politics and government, and they list the top 100, but I just wanted to recognize a few of the hundreds that they had recognized. First of all, Ginger Delagall, who is the Executive Director of the Florida Association of Counties. We work with her, so we're very happy that she was named. Both our congressional representatives, Lois Frankel and Sheila Shifellis McCormick, were named also. And then Ava Parker from, President of Palm Beach State College. And then lastly, I want to ditto all the happy holiday wishes to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you. Just a, I had a couple of comments. When are we going to see a, an update on the special tax that we were talking about yesterday in Agenda Review, the 401, what is it called, 401A Plan?
Yes. Actually, staff has been working with the County Attorney's Office and outside counsel. We do anticipate bringing that to you in January?
January.
In January, we'll be bringing that back to the board.
Also, yesterday during Agenda Review, we talked about, you know, the recent occurrence at the Wellington Club, and, which is the property that was supposed to have affordable housing units going to those that needed, and wasn't, you know, it was an interesting article in the Palm Beach Post. But what kind of checks and balances can we see in the future to make sure this doesn't happen?
We are looking at our processes now. We, I have, along with Patrick Rutter, spoken with the IG, along with his staff person, to look into it, to work together, to see how we can tighten the rules. When we first started this process, we did recommend that we actually sign off on the lease before... lease before it went into effect. That way, we could have it in our database. But the industry thought that was going to be a bit too cumbersome, et cetera, et cetera. And so we did not move forward with that particular step. However, we are going to go back to industry to talk about what's going on, how we best tighten it up, and be as efficient as possible, because we also don't want to hold the individuals up from getting in the apartment. But we're going to also look at the, how they respond and provide reports to us. So it's a methodology. We're going to go back, dust off what we had initially, work with the IG, work with industry, and then come up with a plan that we'll be bringing back to you. We will be talking about housing, where's Patrick, in January, at a January workshop, so we'll include a number of these steps in that process as we speak to you about how to move forward.
And industry was the word when I was talking about the mandatory pre-app meeting. Industry was the word I was looking for. And in this instance, I don't think industry should be dictating to us what we do. We agree with you. Okay. Because we're giving them density bonuses, we're giving them financing, we're bending over backwards to accommodate, and I think they need to, they need to be held accountable for this. So there's, we need to make sure that this does not happen again in the future. And last, I know we had a previous agenda item about a radio pole, radio tower, but it's, I just wanted an update on what was going on with the county, the state, the radio tower for the town of Jupiter.
Certainly. We met with the town and parks county staff on, in October of this year, late October, after we had received a response from the state. The state basically told us, we don't believe this is the path, but will not come in at this point. As you know, we have a lease with the state for the park, and we want to make sure that we remain in compliance. So what we agreed with the town was to draft a license agreement, which was completed and will be sent for the town to review today. Hopefully, they will concur with that license agreement, with that draft. We will send it to the state, have the state hopefully review, and then give us a final position. And once we receive that final response, which we hope will be positive, then we will execute. That's our plan.
Thank you. I mean, this is a life safety issue, so that's just why I wanted to follow up.
Understood.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Of course.
And as everybody's saying, Merry Christmas, Mahana Kwanzaa.
That was good. All right.
Say it again.
Merry Christmas, Mahana Kwanzaa.
That's amazing. All right. Just, I want to, just, before we go to Vice Mayor Sacks, I just want to go back to Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request for an off-site proclamation declaring December 23, 2022, as Fritz Valdez Jr., Hammond Ball, 360 Day in Palm Beach County.
And we have, so we have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by Commissioner, Commissioner Marino, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries five to zero. And moving on to Vice Mayor Sacks.
Thank you so much, Mayor. There's always one person who really is the moving force behind something good coming to anybody's district. And we have a wonderful, wonderful woman named Mirna Rosoff, who's a real pistol, actually. And she put her energies together to make sure that we had a library at the New Canyon area. And this is before my time, but I tell you what, we're doing the groundbreaking, and it is magnificent. So I would ask for board support in naming a conference room there in the library after Mirna Rosoff. As you know, not only is she a pistol, but she's, she's also past President of Cobra. And I would like to honor her efforts and honor Cobra's efforts in asking for board support for that.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sacks. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Woodward. Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Woodward, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Thank you. And last night, we lit the first candle of Hanukkah, and we got a Christmas tree. So this is, this is South Florida, the beauty of all the holidays being celebrated together. And Kwanzaa, I believe, started in my hometown of Detroit, Michigan. So those who celebrate all these holidays, have a merry, merry, happy, and holy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. I have a couple of things. I sent you all a note, a notice. I'm asking for board support to send a letter on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners to Secretary Buttigieg in regards to supporting a grant for SFR TA, and so... So Commissioner Bernard makes a motion to, and a second by Commissioner Marino. Okay, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries, so that letter will go out today. Okay. Next is, I sent out a, or a listing of our board assignments, and hopefully you've all had a chance to review them, just putting it on the record, and have offered that list also to the clerk for their records as well. And then, as we're coming into the holiday season, for many people, this can be a difficult time of year for a lot of different reasons. And so if, if you're feeling lonely, or you feel like you need help, for whatever the reason might be, there are people in our community that do, are available and do want to help you. I encourage folks to either reach out to 211, or if you're, if you're feeling or you're aware of a family member that is considering taking their own life, we have our Suicide Prevention Hotline, which is a 988. And so those services are available. Everybody needs to feel, you know, if you feel like you need help, please reach out. Please reach out. We want, we want to make sure your voice is heard and you receive the help that you need. And with that, I want to echo everybody else's comments, wishing everybody a very happy holiday season, whatever you celebrate or don't celebrate. Happy New Year, a happy and healthy New Year for you and your family, and just thank our community for everything everybody does to make this the great place it is, where we live, work, and play in Palm Beach County. So thank you all. And anything else, I would say this meeting is adjourned.